All set.
Thank you. All right. Greetings, greetings, citizens of Rochester and greetings to you all. First and foremost, we just want to wish everyone a happy holidays and a merry Christmas. We're just a few days before Christmas and we're so grateful to be able to see all of you and wishing you and your families a good, wonderful Christmas and glad that we are all safe from COVID-19 and are grateful that we're able to be here together to have another work session. Today's work session, we're joined today, my name is Council Vice President Willie Lightfoot. We're joined also with Council members Mike Patterson, Council member Mayor-Elect Malik Evans, Councilperson LaShay Harris, Councilmember Miguel Melendez, and our staff, Katie Hassawonder, and filling in or steadening in for Councilmember Dr. Gruber, Beth Seaver is here with us joining as well as support to our staff. We have several members from NBD. Today's work session will be on shelter rent pilot agreements for affordable housing projects. We want to congratulate Dana Miller to his upgrade to Commissioner of NBD. We take time to virtual world to give you some claps and some snaps for your and congratulate you, sir. And we're going to turn it over to you to introduce yourself and your staff and to begin this work. Also, we shared with Josanne Reeves, who's a liaison between the mayor's office and council as well, too. We welcome her tonight. So at this time, I can say Commissioner-Elect Dana Miller, we turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I certainly appreciate your kind words and thoughts, and we certainly look forward to getting a lot of really, really great things done in NBD in the future as we have in the past. I am happy to be here with you. I realize that this is the last day before a holiday and a vacation, and so people are, as you said, anxious to do other things. So we will try not to take too much time, but this is a very important topic, and it's also a topic that is very time sensitive, which is why we needed to talk with you today. I am joined today by Mayor James Smith, by Michael Zizara from Assessment, and also members of my housing staff, Carol Wheeler, who's the manager of housing, and Linda Haddon, who is one of our most senior people in the housing area and who has put this presentation together for you today. So I will turn this over to Linda, and Linda will walk you through the PowerPoint, and then we will answer any questions that you might have. And we can't hear you, Linda, so.
Sorry.
There we go. Much, much better.
Sorry about that. Let me see if... Can everybody see the screen?
I do not yet.
Not yet.
No, yeah?
Not yet. Do you have sharing capabilities? Yeah, okay, not yet.
Let me try one more time.
Okay.
Apologies.
I'll take your time. It's okay.
You know, this worked easily when I was trying to do it before.
Yeah, it always does.
It always does, right? So first, let me say, let's go here.
Now we're getting something.
All right.
There we go.
There we go.
Yes, here we are. Nice.
Now, let's do this.
We have your notes on the side, just so you know.
Yeah, that was, the intent was really just to be full screen.
Okay, yeah, we do have your notes.
It's actually just showing us the next slide in the series.
Right, right.
That's fine.
So Linda, there you go.
Yes. Let's just go with this.
Yep.
My apologies. So I'm gonna move this over. If I can read it better. All right. So thank you for joining us to let us present to you information about a request that Neighborhood Business Development would like to propose to City Council related to shelter rent pilot extensions. Neighborhood and Business Development will be requesting approval from City Council at the January 18th City Council meeting. Approval will be for extension of expiring or reinstated shelter rent agreements. The approval would be for any affordable housing projects that continue to be subject to mortgages for New York State or federal agencies' funding, as well as related New York State regulatory agreements covering that housing. Approval of such an extension authority would be an option, not an obligation of the administration. Pilot extensions would be at the discretion of the administration, subject to confirmation that the projects are in current compliance with New York State and city requirements to provide safe, decent, and affordable housing. Taxable status date for the 2022-23 City Property Tax Year is February 1st, 2022. Folks will note that that is after the January meeting, but before the February meeting, which is why this is a bit time sensitive. And the next bullet basically explains why taxable status dated February 1st, taking action at this point, allows for this to be implemented. A payment in lieu of tax as background is a payment made to a government for some or all of the property tax revenue for properties based on criteria defined by that related municipality. The City of Rochester's pilots are approved by the Pilot Review Committee and then by City Council through a City Council ordinance. Though there are several types of pilot agreements available from the City of Rochester, this presentation will be specific to shelter rent pilots, which are granted for affordable rental projects primarily financed with New York State and federal funding sources, serving primarily households at or below 60% of the median family income. Shelter rent pilots typically, for the City of Rochester, include authorization of annual payments equal to 10% of gross rent minus vacancy and utilities, rather than a payment due on the full assessed value of the property or properties included in that project. These shelter rent pilots allowed for reduced costs to operate affordable rental housing that has revenue limitations and expense requirements limiting the increase of monthly rent rates, as well as requirements for deposits into reserve accounts. Shelter rent pilots are a mechanism typically utilized by the City of Rochester for properties that otherwise would be eligible to be assessed under New York State 581A, a real property tax law. Action, as mentioned before, you might hear this a couple times during the presentation, at the January meeting, will allow for these projects that may have expired or expiring shelter rent pilots to be revised or otherwise updated prior to the upcoming February 1st taxable status date. Again, action at the January meeting allows for these properties to be included under a pilot agreement for the 2022-23 Property Tax Year. Predictability, yes?
I'm sorry, just before we go too far, could I just ask if Mike would just say maybe a sentence about what the taxable status date is? I think everybody knows, but just to make sure.
Yeah, taxable status date, we look at a property, we look at the ownership, occupancy, and use as of that day. So that's the date that all exemption applications have to be turned in by. So, I mean, without this approval by February 1st, whatever, we have a few projects that are expiring. So we would have to put those on the tax roll, take them out of Roll Section 8, the wholly exempt portion, and put them into Roll Section 1, and then they would become 100% taxable. Under 581A, as long as there's still a regulatory agreement, then the ownership, the entity must provide to us by February 1st audited financial statements. So with most of these corporations, these companies with their fiscal year, their calendar year ending December 31st, to get audited financial statements within a month is awful difficult, too. So.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mike. That's exactly what I, I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that. You know, if there is no pilot in effect on these properties as of the February 1st taxable status date, then they revert to the normal tax that would be due, and that's very important because.
Correct, but under 581A, once we get those audited financial statements, we have to look at those and really what we're supposed to do is take all of their actual expenses. But for some of the projects that have expired, that are on the taxable portion of the assessment rule, you know, it's, sometimes it turns into a disagreement as far as what expenses we're going to take. A lot of these projects, they're heavy on administrative charges, management fees. Every one of these projects, as long as there's still a regulatory agreement in place, they have to reserve a certain amount for capital improvements. And on some of the projects, depending on the way it's set up, over the 30-year mortgage term, they have to reserve the full cost of replacement. So which really drives down the net operating income, which could result in a very low taxable value on the assessment rule. But we do have a lot of the projects on it at $20,000 or $25,000 a unit, or could be a single-family house with an assessment of $25,000. But even with the 10% shelter rent, these companies are a little bit further ahead with that, and we don't share that money with the county, right? It doesn't get split with the county. That shelter rent comes directly to the city. So, I mean, if it's on the taxable portion of the roll, the county gets their portion, and then again, the company's also paying the pure water's capital charge on the property, too, which bumps it up a little bit. So there is a savings also for these corporations, but it's really also beneficial, I think, to the City of Rochester, too, to extend these pilots.
Okay, thank you.
Two, two questions, Dana, if I can, real quick.
Sure, Mike, go ahead.
Okay, so the first question is, how many, how many pilot agreements are we looking at being impacted if, if this were not to pass? How many pilot agreements would be impacted?
Lynn, did you have that? I think there's about five or six, maybe?
Okay, there are six that could possibly benefit from this for this property, for the upcoming property tax year. The universe of shelter rent pilots is approximately 80 communities, eight zero, that do have shelter rent pilot agreements. So this would allow us to address any of those administratively. And there is, you know, we believe value in working with those property owners and managers to be able to continue to afford to operate and maintain the properties, which they're required to do under regulatory agreements. We'll talk a little bit more about some of the terms related to that in a second. What we were talking about next was the predictability of a continued shelter rent pilot that allows for planning.
Okay.
Just, just, last question. The last question is, how, so you're asking us to reauthorize this agreement. What is the normal term that we reauthorize these agreements?
Well, we typically end up looking at having the agreement be coterminous or equal to the term of the regulatory compliance period. You'll see later on that we talked about what practices have been in the past for the city. A number of years ago, that compliance period was 30 years. It has shifted to, for rehab projects, 40 years minimum, and for brand-new units coming online, 50 years of affordable housing.
Well, I mean, you guys are coming to us to get this authorization. When was the last time we authorized these, this, the blanket authorization for the agreements? And how long do we normally authorize the blanket authorizations?
This is actually a first request.
Oh, okay. Well, that's, that's the main question. I'm sitting here like, I just don't remember this. So when was the last time?
No, no. Hopefully, we'll be able to explain part of our reasoning and desire for this. So if folks are ready, I'll go back to the presentation.
Yep, thank you, Linda.
Okay, so predictability of the continued shelter rent pilot payment does assist property management to forecast and plan accordingly. It also represents a valuable cost reduction that assists to sustain affordable rental housing, which is critical as a need in Rochester. We all know that. For the City of Rochester, shelter rent pilots are typically provided for projects that primarily serve households at or below 60% median family income and are subject to New York State regulatory agreements requiring the ongoing provision of decent, safe, affordable housing for periods ranging from 30 to 50 years from the time the units are initially occupied. So we had just touched on that a little bit. Projects that received shelter grants, or excuse me, shelter rent pilots in the late 90s and early 2000s had terms ranging for periods between 15 and 25 years while being subjected and still subject to regulatory agreements, requiring them to provide affordable housing for a period of at least 30 years. Expired shelter rent pilots can or have resulted in large operating cost increases for projects with rents tied to affordability limits. Next, we're going to show you a couple of charts that give an overview of what it looks like for the City of Rochester. The first chart, this is updated annually based on information received from HUD about our local metropolitan statistical area, and these are the different percentages of income based on that information from HUD. Just below the word home, we'll see 60%. So these are the maximum incomes that the affordable housing projects that we're talking about comply with. Next, we'll share, it's a little smaller, I apologize for the size. This shows at the top, income limits, and then below, based on the size of the units from efficiencies to five bedrooms, the maximum rent amount for those units that does include utility costs. So those are rents. If all utility costs are included, they would be less than that if tenants pay their own utilities. Utilities do not include telephone or internet at this time, however. So.
I got a question?
Yes.
Just to clarify, utilities, is that electric, gas and electric, and water?
It is gas and electric. Water is typically paid by the property management.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Certainly, it's a good question. Thank you for asking. As we've already referenced, we're requesting authorization of a policy change to allow previously approved City of Rochester shelter rent payment in lieu of tax pilot agreements for affordable rental housing projects to be extended or reestablished. Approval of the extension is at the city's discretion to align with terms to be coterminous to mortgages held by New York State or federal agencies for the project. There would be no proposed changes to the affordability of the properties or requests for changes to other terms of the existing shelter pilot agreements. The extension authority would reduce administrative and legislative time requirements while continuing to support ongoing affordable rental housing projects. The request will allow the city to attend to existing shelter rent pilots in a manner consistent with recent practice for approval of new shelter rent pilots. Some reason. It appears that that's.
I think that's a duplicate.
Yeah, sorry about that, folks. Some newer shelter rent pilots approved include the ability for the City of Rochester at its discretion to extend the shelter rent pilot for additional terms for up to the full term of the related New York State regulatory agreement. Current standards for those regulatory agreements are a 40-year minimum for refinancing rehabilitated affordable rental housing for it to continue for an additional 40 years. And for new, newly constructed units, additional units to our community, there's a minimum of 50 years. This request would streamline the process to extend shelter rent pilots for projects to continue to provide safe, decent, and affordable rental housing. The current process to extend a shelter rent pilot with no other changes is submission of a new application for extension or renewal of the shelter rent pilot by the owner or property manager, NBD staff preparation of a pilot request, submission packet, Pilot Review Committee review and approval of the request, and then a submission to City Council and approval by City Council through a new City Council ordinance, and then the preparation and execution of a new shelter rent pilot agreement. Reiterating, approvals of extensions would be at the city's discretion, subject to verification of ongoing continued compliance with New York State and city requirements for safe, decent, affordable housing. Ongoing support of regulated affordable rental housing is a critical need that's become ever more apparent since the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, and actions such as extending shelter rent pilots demonstrates the City of Rochester's commitment to sustain and increase such housing types. The ability to align current city shelter rent pilots to be coterminous with New York State requirements for affordable housing would provide the administration a consistent policy to follow as needs arise for such extensions. Some background information, New York State 581A real property law, Mike touched on this a bit earlier. This is a provision that applies to properties with a specific purpose to provide affordable rental housing. As Mike described, it requires an annual submission of audited financial statements to be reviewed by the assessor or Bureau of Assessment staff on or before the taxable status date of February 1st relative to the property valuation for the following tax roll year. That is an annual process. And 581A reviews require city staff, city assessment staff to review annual operating statements using the income capitalization approach, as Mike described. It's a time-intensive, detail-oriented process needing to be undertaken at a pretty busy time of year. The shelter rent pilot agreement provides a much more efficient method of calculating payment. And that's the end of that part of the discussion.
I have some questions.
Okay, go right ahead, Councilmember.
All right, so I'll be brief. So the, so the pilot agreement is based upon the shelter agreement, shelter rent, the pilot agreement dictates that the way you calculate what they are required to pay us is 10% of the gross rent minus utilities. Is that correct, or is there more to it than that?
Minus utilities and vacancy.
Okay, minus utilities and vacancy. Okay, so when we're talking about utilities, are we talking about just the utilities that the, the company pays, or are we talking about the utilities for the entire complex, even the utilities that the tenant pays?
It is for those utility costs paid for by the property owner-manager.
Okay.
For the, for the process. There are some, we see different things with different projects. Some of the affordable rental projects have, you know, heat and electric paid by the tenants. Others have the rent set where it's all-inclusive, and they don't have those separate bills. So we see both. And the, the amount that would be subtracted is the amount paid by the companies.
Okay, so for the ones who are picking up the larger utility cost, energy efficiency is kind of a disincentive for them, you know, because basically that, for lack of better saying it any other way, the larger the utility bill that you're paying, the impact is going to be on the other side, is going to lower your, your, your payment to the city. Is that kind of correct, or is close, or am I missing something?
Well, it certainly seems like that's a possibility. What, you know, this is, you know, what I have observed over time with projects, it is something that, lower utility bills, everybody wants. I mean, they're also, you know, obligated and mandated to do a lot of things with the regulatory agreements, and the less money they have to cover those costs, you know, for instance, if they do have high utility bills, the harder it is for them to keep up with all of the expenses of keeping the properties well-maintained.
Well, the only reason I'm asking is that, and Lord knows, y'all got plenty to do. But it's my hope that, that the current structure wouldn't be a disincentive to increase energy efficiency, given our climate action goals and all that nice fun stuff, and since buildings are a huge, are a huge use of energy, the more efficient they can become, the better off we all are. And it's just my hope that, as you guys are looking at everything, and I know y'all look at everything, if you could just start thinking about, hey, how do we, how do we give them a greater incentive for energy efficiency in this, in this structure? You know, I mean, if we can, in my mind, if they, if a, if an organization could show that, okay, we did, we did an energy efficiency upgrade at this property, and because of that energy efficiency upgrade, we are saving 10%, 20%, is there a way we could reflect that and possibly lower their pilot agreement payments even more? Because they are helping us to carry out a goal that we're, we're looking to pursue.
It's an interesting thought, and certainly something we could look into.
You know, because every little nudge helps, and, you know, I'm, you know, incoming Commissioner Miller knows that I'm a huge fan of Passive House, and, and so, you know, any, any bump we can give somebody towards Passive House is something that I certainly want to see us support. And, you know, and if that can, you know, if part of the advantage is, oh, yeah, it saves you a ton of money, you recoup that extra expense just in your utility savings upfront, but then we could possibly say, all right, for a comparable building built in, say, 1980, this would have been the utility cost, you built it now to the Passive House standard, and you have this, you have this additional savings on top of that. We'll take that into consideration and throw that in there on the side, on the positive for you to lower your, your shelter rent payment. I'm just putting it out there, and I'm done, because it is the day before the day before, so I'm done.
Thank you, Councilman. That's, those are, those are great thoughts, and you're absolutely right. We, we know very well that, you know, you, but not only you, many of us are very concerned about, you know, greenhouse gases and utility use and all kinds of things like that. So if there's a way that we can help more greatly incentivize energy reductions, we certainly would want to take a look at that.
Hi, along those lines, does the SEPAIS program, can we utilize that in a way to do the same thing? The commercial PACE program? I see blank.
Yeah, I'm not aware of it, so.
It's, it's a program that gives incentives for energy efficiency in buildings. We can get any more information.
So just another question, too, just for clarity. We're talking about just renewal and extensions, but every new pilot agreement would still come through the normal process? This is just for extensions and renewals? Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Yes.
Yes, this would apply to pilots that have already been approved through this year. The expectation is that, and the intention is that for future pilot requests, that there would be reference to the opportunity or ability to extend an initial pilot period. Oftentimes, what you'll see is a 30-year period. Sometimes you see different amounts, but that it would allow for, at the end of that term, at the city's discretion, to be able to extend for up to the full remaining time period that the regulatory agreements require.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, thank you, Dana and Mike, Carol, Linda. Any other questions from our council members?
I do have one more question. Is there, can you identify?
Is there, can you identify any downsides to doing this?
I think it would be right now, I mean, we do have a few of these affordable projects that, in litigation over the taxes. I mean, this is just so much more of a streamlined approach, extending these and doing the 10% shelter rent agreement. And, and as Linda said earlier, it helps the, the developer, the property owner kind of budget and know what they're looking at. So, I, I don't vote yes on too many special pilots, but Dana will vouch for me on that, but I, I do support this one. It would just be much more of a streamlined approach and easier on us, easier on the city. And again, you know, we don't give up, we don't split this, this shelter rent with the county at all, so.
Thank you. And the lawsuits are about dispute over how much taxes are owed, or us trying to recover taxes?
I, you're kind of
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you?
Sorry, the lawsuits, are they disputes over how much taxes are owed, or are we trying to recover taxes?
No, it's, it's disputes over the assessed values. Again, as I mentioned earlier, you know, they are heavy on administrative fees. I mean, there's case law on both sides of this. And we're, we're kind of right in the middle. So, you know, I don't know where we stand with these. It's, it's again, you know, some of these regulatory agreements require the developers to reserve 100% of the replacement costs of the building. Some of that doesn't show up on their financial statements, but so, I mean, we're, we're working through it. It's, it's a couple of projects that it's only one year litigation, which I'm sure we can settle pretty easily.
Thanks for the info.
Thank you for providing the materials, and, and with this recorded, we'll be able, of course, to share it with the council members who aren't here and the new council members coming in, so very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you for your time. We certainly appreciate it. As was mentioned, you will be seeing legislation which would authorize this in January. You'll probably see it actually before January. You should see it at the end of this month, but it will be voted on in January. So, we're anticipating that by getting you this presentation now, it will prepare you for seeing that legislation when you get it. Obviously, as always, once you get the legislation, if you have any additional questions, we're, we're prepared to address those. So, again, we appreciate your time, especially on the day before. The day before is Councilmember Patterson.
All right, well, thank you, Dana and your staff, and to all of the council members. It is 5:06. We typically give about 45 minutes to an hour to these meetings, but we're going to give you back 24 minutes of your day and your time. We're so grateful for all of you. Thank Katie, again, Beth, all of our staff. I also, I think I saw Bridget come on board, too. Thank you, Bridget. We're wishing you guys a very safe Merry Christmas. Wear your mask, protect your, your, your circle. Get those home tests, get those home tests. They're all over the place. They're in houses of worship, they're in barber shops, they're, they're our centers, they're in different locations. Go on the city website, Google COVID-19, find out where those home tests are. They're free, they're giving them away. Get those, there's two per the kit. There's also a very nice YouTube video on the city website that tells you how to use them. I got through it, my wife got through it. Thank God, we tested negative. Just again, we're going through so much. We're glad to be able to have a conversation about providing more affordable housing for our citizens and our people in our community. We thank you, we congratulate all of you for going forward in this next administration. And, and we're so grateful to be able to continue to be working with you and our citizens. And we will say to you, we bid you greetings, love, peace, and hair grease, as they say, and God bless you guys, all right? Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody.